Municipality Council Meeting of April 7, 2015. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment of silence, please. You may be seated. Madam Secretary, roll call.
William Caldwell.
Here.
Gary Simpson.
Here.
Marlin Milner. Olivia Brady. Derek Perry. Sonya Sanders.
Here.
Linda Christian.
Counsel, would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the council workshop meeting held on March 17, 2015?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. I'd like to announce that counsel met an executive session to discuss legal matters.
Yes, personnel.
And personnel. First up on our agenda will be a presentation by Mr. Thomas Stores on the update on the Markley Street, Main Street, proposed intersection improvements. Mr. Stores?
Yeah, it's, uh, I think it's kind of like too still closed in.
Thank you, counsel. My name is actually Dean Kaiser. That is Mr. Stores. I am tasked with, from our company, Burns Engineering Incorporated, to present to you our redesign of the intersection of Main Street and Markley Street for the Markley Street Reconstruction Project. Basically, if you recall, back in August of last year, we met at one of your work sessions to discuss the potential improvements to the intersection. We left that meeting with a resounding no for the design that we had at the time, which included the, with no gates option to the grade crossing. After a few meetings with both SEPTA, the full design team, including PennDOT, and some of the other folks involved in our process, we come back to you today with basically a plan where we do now have gates back in place, sort of a redesign of the intersection to make those gates work, and some components that, to make the intersection work as safely as possible, is what we're promoting. You should have in your packet the, some of the versions of the plans that we've provided. There is a, there is a basic plan, has very little text on it. It's the intersection as it, as it's been designed. Just to give you a quick background, what we've done is, in the eastbound approach of Main Street, we now have two 20-foot gates. One of the gates is placed in a raised median that we are now placing in the middle of Main Street. What that median will end up doing, obviously, is to eliminate the left turns from Main Street westbound into Water Street. The second plan, or one of the, additional plans in your set, is basically an aerial diagram that illustrates to accommodate the traffic that needs to go down Water Street, which is mainly truck traffic. We've done counts there before. There are some, some regular passenger vehicles get down there, but there was a truck transfer station down there that a lot of traffic was coming up Markley Street, I'm sorry, and turning, turning left onto Main Street and then turning left into Water, Water Street. What we've basically come up with is, with the, sort of the acceptance of PennDOT, the acceptance, a little bit, of, of the municipality at this point, is to create a roadway that extends Barbado Street from Lafayette down to Washington Avenue.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
What you're referring to is what we have up here?
Yes.
And is that also on that board right there?
Yes.
This first board? As you're describing the things, can you point it out on that board just so I know that I'm looking at the correct thing on my small version?
Mr. Stores will help point it out. Because we need to add the raised median on Main Street as we go through the westbound direction, say, towards Water Street, what we've done is we've placed a raised median in there. That will help protect the gate, a gate arm that we need to put in there. SEPTA did not want extremely long gate arms out there, so what we did was, we put the median out there. We can have two shorter 20-foot gate arms that will stop traffic as a train is approaching and crossing Main Street. To accommodate the traffic that needs to go down Water Street, what we've attempted to do is, we'll have that same traffic as it comes up Markley Street. Instead of turning left onto Main to turn left onto Water, now it can turn right on the Main Street, turn right at Barbado Street, and then per this plan, per the aerial diagram that we show you, as they come down Barbados, at Lafayette Street, we need to get them down to Washington Street. So what we'd like to do is to create a roadway, a linkage of Barbados between Lafayette and Washington Street. That linkage, obviously, as per this diagram, will go through the existing parking lot that's down there, cross over the trail, and then tie into, to Washington Street. Washington Street, obviously, then turns back and the traffic that does go in there now is going over to Water Street for some of the businesses that are back there. So that's the scenario that we need to accommodate, just the, the two gate arms on the eastbound approach of Main Street to the grade crossing. In the westbound direction of Main Street, we will have a 35-foot gate arm. SEPTA is accommodating and, and will go ahead and provide that, or have that gate arm approved from their perspective. We have a little bit of real estate left on that corner to accommodate a new gate arm, a gantry, all the required components, the grade crossing system. We will have flashing lights. Both that gate arm and the gate arm in the eastbound direction will also have bells on them, standard railroad bells to signal that the train is also coming. And finally, the traffic in the southbound direction of Markley Street, ultimately, the gate arm in the westbound direction blocks them. They also, we do have, and the, the signal plan and this, this diagram just basically shows, we will have a no right turn, you know, as the train is crossing through. It's an LED sign that basically tells that right-turning traffic, the southbound right-turning traffic from Markley onto westbound Main Street, to not try to turn. The gate arm will be in their way, but they'll also have a sign that tells them not to turn at those, at those times. And finally, the eastbound, I'm sorry, the northbound direction of Markley Street, because of the, the gate closing action and all of the flashing lights and the bells, basically tells them, plus the traffic signal itself, tells that left-turning traffic that they will not be crossing over the grade crossing while the, while the train's coming, and the gates are down. So what we've been able to do is put the two, the two sets of gates, basically the eastbound gates and the westbound gates, back in place. And everything else that we're doing there accommodates the, the FRA standards, the manual and uniform traffic control device standards, and we feel that we have a, a safe and sound system that we can continue our design on.
Thank you, counsel. Do you have any questions? Councilwoman Brady?
Thank you. I do have one question regarding this Barbado Street proposal.
Yes.
So what you're doing, what you're suggesting is that there would be, because of the median strip and the inability to turn left from Main Street to Water Street, what you're going to do is, I assume, have signage that indicates that if you want to turn left onto Water Street, you have to now turn right to go up Main Street, down Barbados, cross through what is now a parking lot, cross over the trail, and down on Washington Street, and make that big, long detour? Is that what you're, is that what you're suggesting, that there's going to be signage to do this, A?
We can add signage. We have not done a full design, obviously, until we have your approval, but we feel that the, the linkage will accommodate all the traffic that needs to go that way. There's a few businesses back there. We've already spoken with several of them, and, and most of them feel that it's actually a better maneuver for them to have to do that, that route instead of the lefts and even the right turns in that they, they have to try to do now onto Water Street from Main Street.
Do you have a number of the vehicle traffic that goes that direction?
I have it. I don't have it on me tonight.
And how would that impact the traffic going eastbound on Main Street and making that roundabout? That's my only concern is, well, that's a big concern, is how it would detract, affect the current traffic patterns going in that direction.
The peak hour traffic is not that high at the moment. I know that there's probably some vacant parcels back there, but the traffic that we counted when, when we did all our counts for the Markley Street Project showed a, a very small percentage of traffic actually utilizing that intersection currently. So the left turns in, the right turns in, and any traffic that was actually coming out is not a real significant number. So we feel that the traffic, having to do this more circuitous route, isn't going to be impacted a great deal. A good percentage of the traffic that is using that route is the, the truck transfer traffic for the, the transfer station that's back there. So it's more of the, the garbage trucks and larger loading facility-type trucks. So those are the trucks that would ultimately use that.
And would there be an effort on SEPTA's part to communicate with the people who do use that route to make this circuitous route? And also, incidentally, I'm not sure how this is done when a traffic pattern changes this significantly, but if somebody were coming in from out of town and they were relying on GPS, would the new instructions be available at the time that this construction has completed or in the process of being completed that would alert them and route them in the proper
Truthfully, I don't know how the, how the GPS system gets updated. Personally, I don't, I mean, I use it, obviously, but I don't know their system. Through PennDOT, you know, we, we will use our, the communications team to spread the word and get more information out, so the general public using, you know, we're doing that right now with the, the current construction, so I don't see why they wouldn't be amenable to, you know, doing stuff for, for future, you know, after everything is built, making sure that there's, you know, enough promotion and everybody understands.
And I would like to, I would like to see the proposal based on the signage for this new route.
Okay.
At some point. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilman Caldwell?
Thank you, Council President. First, I forget your name again.
Dean Kaiser.
Dean, thank you very much. The last time you were here, we, I think we beat up on you a little bit.
Not a problem.
But thank you, really thank you very, very much for listening to what we had to say. And, you know, this is a fantastic solution. And, Crandall, I don't know what the municipality had to do to get the Barbado Street extension, but for me, you know, I think that is fantastic. I think what you've done is opened up all of the vacant property to the east of the water plant, all of the vacant property to the west of the water plant, and all of the property that currently sits on, where the transfer station sits, to development, to higher use. And I think, you know, in one swoop, what you've done is you've extended our downtown waterfront, really across the bridge and given a connection. That Barbado Street section gives us a connect, gives development a connection right across, you know, the 202 corridor, which has been such an obvious difficulty till now. So brilliant move. I think it's, it's, it's fantastic. I think it will, I mean, I've walked down there and, and, you know, looked at those, those streets and said, you know, how do we, how do we open this up? Because there's tons of developable land down there for commercial development. Great job. Great job on you guys for listening, and great job on that, that proposal. Excellent.
Thank you, and I certainly want to give credit to Dean, Tom, Matt Ettmans, the whole team. Actually, when the idea and the discussion came up, we, we certainly jumped right on it and, for those very, very reasons, but I have to say that particularly the county folks were really, really on that as well. I mean, they, they really wanted to see that happen, and that possibility for us was something we immediately saw when the idea came up. So we supported it and pushed it 100%.
Cool. That's, I had no other questions.
Councilman Simpson?
So Dean, thank you. One question that I have, or I don't know if it's a question more so a comment, maybe Council, Councilwoman Brady. I don't know how much signage is actually really needed, because really, you know, speaking to Jane and Bill, the, the general use of that area will be for kind of heavy trucks, dump trucks, et cetera, not necessarily for common, everyday drivers, per se, as far as how you maneuver your way around. It makes it easier for individuals that are going back to, what is that, Onyx, I think, back there?
Yeah, the transfer station.
Yeah, the transfer station, right. So.
The who?
And a cab company, yeah. So that's not, for, for, so general John Q. public, I don't know if they're traveling back there, but for those who have businesses back there, I think it makes it a little bit easier for them to get in and out and around, more so than it does for, like, you and me, per se, to, to just randomly drive down through there. So I don't know if, if, if that is so much of a necessity, until they may develop, like Councilman Caldwell suggested, if they develop that, then that becomes something more doable. And I think GPS gets, gets, gets redone kind of on an annual basis once real new streets, named streets, roads are added to the system, then it gets downloaded, so on and so forth. So it wouldn't, I don't think it would be anything that they would do, once, once it becomes a state road or federal road or whatever it is, that information then gets passed on to GPS systems, per se. That's all I had to say, but thank you for the work you did.
Counsel, any other questions? Councilwoman Brady?
Just one follow-up. How, how does this affect Lafayette Street extension? I mean, I know it doesn't go up that far, but eventually, with the potential of Danauer Bridge crossing, coming over onto Lafayette, how's that all gonna, is this gonna affect it, one way or the other?
Can you come up and speak in the mic? The microphone.
Right here.
The microphone.
Yes, that won't be affected, and we, we have a coordination. We will coordinate with the project also with Lafayette Street. We may have a coordination with the part where it's, where, I think it's the intermediate unit is the one we, we probably gonna affect them in some parts, but other than that, I don't think it's gonna be, you know, affect anything with the project with Lafayette Street.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Councilman Simpson, thank you for that explanation that you gave, because what you said actually made more sense when you were talking about rerouting the traffic. I did assume that it meant the everyday, regular traffic and wondering how individuals would know that there was an alternative path. So thank you for providing that information. On your drawing, on this one here, on my drawing, I see red dots along the, a straight line. Are those the arms that raise up and come down?
Those are actually the gantries. Those are the raised gantries. They are the structures that go over the roadway. Because of the number of lanes, typically, by, by FRA rules, Federal Railroad Administration rules, we need to flash, we have to have signals above the lanes. So basically, every single driver in every approach lane, as they would come through that grade crossing, would have a, the wig-wag flashing signal in front of them. So those red indications are all the different, some of the different red flashers that would be overhead. We're still going to be looking at possibly adding, potentially adding more, because we want to make sure that every driver, and even every pedestrian, has a good vantage point and understands. And obviously, you know, as part of, well, you know, a blind pedestrian would not see the flasher, but then hopefully they would see the bell, or hear the bell, I'm sorry. They would hear the bell. Now for the pedestrians that are deaf and blind, that's, that's a little bit more cumbersome, but we have everything that we need in place with this plan to move forward.
So is it an arm, or is it a thing up high that, say, a train is, is coming? Is it an arm or something?
If you, if you remember what the intersection looks like right now, there's actually two short arms.
Right.
That go over the roadway. They only go out about one lane.
Right.
That's how short they are now.
Right.
The new gantries, to, to really add the visibility at this intersection, they're gonna stretch out almost over every through lane. Every lane that you see there is actually gonna be crossed. So the structures are gonna be a lot bigger.
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna be a lot more solid. Most of them are all made of aluminum now, so they can, they can handle the, the loads and the pressures and the wind and things like that, but they will be all the way over the lane. So if you look at, if I look at the gate for the westbound direction, that gantry is probably gonna be close to 30 feet long, so that those flashing signals, those dual signals, are directly over the center of the lane, over top of those lanes.
Okay, and to ensure that I'm viewing it the right way, because there is arm, is there an arm at Markley, I mean, at Marshall, and an arm at Main, or just at Main?
For the grade, the grade crossing at Marshall Street?
Right.
There's arms there also, yes.
Okay, 'cause looking at the drawing, again, it looks, it look, to me, it looks like you have an arm on one side of Markley Street and then an arm on the opposite side also. So will there be arms on two sides of Markley Street?
I think the other arm that you're looking at is the traffic signal.
That's a traffic.
Arm, yes. If you see the, the large triangles, those are the traffic signal heads. So this plan is showing the traffic signals along with the, the gates and the flashing lights.
So, and now Mike, it'll be that, um, this is an arm and this is an arm, correct?
These, these are the, actually, the gates are here. This is a cantilever structure with the flashing signal.
Right.
We just put that a little bit closer just so that it's, are visible as a traffic there. These are the flashing lights that initially make signals. This has an E-arm associated with the cantilever. So there's the E-arms, that's a 35-foot E-arm. Cantilever structure also comes to have some coverage of the lanes where the two flashing signals.
But as, but as it stands now, there are not cantilevers, as you should say, on both sides of Markley, correct?
There is. They're very short.
On both sides?
They, they're short, yes. They actually exist now.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, well, to repeat, Councilman Caldwell and Councilman Simpson, thank you very much for the work that you've performed. Mr. Jones, are we to do anything, or is it just a presentation?
Counsel, I would ask that counsel just, the formal vote to approve the plan so that we can have it on record that they do, and I don't know that if you, you all would need some kind of resolution as a part of any attachment later, we could do it, but certainly the counsel can vote to approve it.
So move. We could use that for our files as we move forward.
Counsel, do you feel ready to, to vote either way? You had a question, Councilwoman Brady?
I do. I'm sorry, I thought of this too late. The construction, how long will all of this take once you break ground?
Because the project actually entails many components. It involves the roadway rehabilitation, it involves a lot of utility relocation, the, the Markley Street Bridge and the Old Bailey Bridge, they're getting completely replaced as part of this part of the project. It's probably going to be a little over two years. The section that's being constructed right now, we call that Section 520, just in, in terminology for PennDOT, and that one's actually on about the same timeframe. It's, it's a little bit longer project from start to finish. There is the culvert that was rebuilt up there, and a lot of the signal work was going on up there also, but all the roadway components were being done. That's, that's gonna take about two, a full two years, and then we, at this point, we project it's gonna take roughly two years for this section. We call this section, Section 510. Roughly two years. We'll know better as we move forward in design, because everything that we're showing here is really conceptual. We now have to start to really design where everything needs to go with regards to utilities and structures and the, the grade crossing components and things like that.
Pardon me.
So we'll have a...
Pardon me. So real quick, so this is actually part of the Markley Street Project.
Yes.
So the other phases that you're gonna be adding into the parking lot and the backside of Water Street and everything else will be something kind of separate in a sense, but part of. So it's not like you're doing any, you're recreating the wheel here, you're just actually confi, finishing the development that was already scheduled with Markley Street. These pieces are being added into that process, and that's kind of it. So it's not...
Can you explain what you're talking about, Councilman Simpson? You lost me.
No, so his timeline, so the timeline that he's explaining is actually part of the Markley Street Project. That's basically what I'm trying to say.
So he's explaining it to a little...
Correct.
Oh, I didn't ask you for it.
And it's all part of the project.
Right. Right. That's good. Thank you, sir.
Markley Street was designed to, from Main Street all the way up to Johnson Highway and a little bit down Johnson Highway. We had to break it up because of the amount of, of funding that was available and the amount of construction that was gonna have to take place. So instead of doing one mega project, which is what it really would've come out to, we did break it up, sort of in half, based just on volume of the amount of work that's necessary. Can I add one last thing, Councilman Simpson, based on one of the statements that you made earlier about the, the roadway? I don't wanna, I don't wanna leave here with anybody thinking about how this, this new little connector is, is going to ultimately fit into everything. Through our processes of, of meetings, it, it actually has been determined that this connector road from Lafayette to Washington would actually still be a municipal roadway, not a federal or state roadway.
That's not what I was saying.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, Counsel, there was a motion on the floor from Councilman Simpson. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The approval is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is a presentation from Mr. Edward Turner and the Norristown Business Association. from Mr. Edward Turner in the Norristown Business Association.
Good evening, Council President and Council. On Friday, March 27th, the Norristown Business Association kicked off Fourth Friday. So every Fourth Friday of the month, there will be live entertainment in the downtown area. The lineup for this Fourth Friday, April 24th, has increased to five events. There will be Jazz on Cherry Street, Advanced Community Partners on the first floor from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. Bon Me, Brister and Bar, they will be having Vietnamese solos from 5:00 to 9:00. La Palmas, they will be having live Mexican music from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Jess Java will be having open mic from 8:00 to 10:00 PM. And Advanced Community Partners on their second floor from 8:00 to 10:00 PM, they will be having salsa lesson followed by salsa dancing. So the lesson will be from 8:00 to 9:00 and then from 9:00 to 10:00, there will be dancing. And the calls for that is up $7. So the NBA, we would just like to thank council and the municipality, you know, for their support. And also, we're, you know, pleased to be, you know, partnering with Montgomery County, you know, moving forward on our Fourth Fridays.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Milner?
Thanks. Ed, you mentioned you're partnering with the county. Is there something involved in partnering with the county? And if so, what is, what is that?
Yes, so now on like some Fourth Fridays, instead of starting in the evening, we're actually going to be starting at noon. So from noon to 2:00, there will be, I guess, live music as well as food along Main Street.
Okay. And how, how will that occur? Are businesses providing that? Or is that going to happen in the county plaza? Is the county underwriting that or?
Some of it is going to happen on the plaza as well as along Main Street. Councilman Milner, as you can see, under administration on, under the administration on, I guess, Item B, I guess there will be more discussion.
Okay, yes, yes, all right, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Simpson?
Yeah, Mr. Turner, thank you for, for the work that you're doing with that. I think that is very, very good. I had an opportunity, I think also with a few other council members that were present, to partake in the Jazz and Jeff Java's event. I think that was, that was done very well. I think maybe the one thing to kind of look forward, so we don't lose, so we don't lose the, our attention span with the number of events?
Yes.
So that we can get maximum, you know, turnout to, you know, to support some of the events?
Yes.
As opposed to like having too many things going on at one time. The Jeff Java thing was great. It would have been better if we had the same flow of people coming from, from the Cherry Street Jazz thing to Jeff Java and hung out a little bit longer. But what you guys are doing is great. You have my 100% support and I will make every event that I possibly can make because I think it's just great for Norristown, but thank you for your work.
You're welcome, thank you. And then the goal is to, we're, I guess, envision people going from like one location to, you know, another location. So instead of maybe spending the, I guess, the entire like two hours at one place, maybe they would spend an hour at one location, then it would go to the, you know, next location.
So how are you marketing this to, to kind of get a larger crowd out, maybe even to bring people from other communities into, into Norristown while this is happening?
Right now, our marketing is, you know, Facebook and we are using our email, you know, list. And then also with the, we are working with the county with, you know, getting the word out too.
Is Times Herald on this at all?
Yes, yes, Times, Times Herald as well.
Councilman Milner?
Thank you. Jane, I'm curious, given the corridor of these activities, could our, for lack of my memory of the exact term, our marketing grant apply to this work? Or have those funds been exhausted? Has that project been exhausted?
The marketing, you're speaking of the marketing piece that we've done for the transportation oriented district?
Yes, I believe that's what I'm referring to, yes.
Those funds were exhausted.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilwoman Brady?
Thank you. Just a quick observation, I think, with the parking situation. Hopefully, if people do come in from out of town, they need to be directed to where parking's going to take place. And I'm not sure if the lot behind the Housing Authority was available to park in, but I think some people were parking there for the Jazz on Cherry Street thing. But it might be, I don't know if that, if you've taken that into consideration or made any agreements with the housing to allow that parking to take place, but I think that would be beneficial. In addition, is there, and this is a question for Crandall, I suppose, are there any plans to potentially look for perhaps the Cherry Street Garage to stay open later to accommodate, to allow for parking to take place during these events that are happening?
I know in a meeting and discussion we had with the county, the county is very much interested in making their garages available at night. And so we've, we've had that discussion and it's ongoing, I think it's imminent that it's going to happen.
Counsel, any other questions? Well, Mr. Turner, I did have a question. The next Fourth Friday in April, all of the businesses you mentioned will be participating or?
Yes, they will be participating.
All of them?
Yes.
Bon Main, Vance and Jeff Java?
And also La Palmas.
La Palmas?
Yes.
Where's that?
I think it's 11 Main Street.
11. Across from where Divas is going to be?
I think it's across from where Divas is going to be.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, two doors down from Almez.
Oh, okay. What kind of business is that?
I'm a Mexican restaurant.
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about now. I know, okay. And in the event for April's Fourth Friday, will get started at what time in?
In the evening, the first event is scheduled to start at 5:00.
5:00?
Yes.
Okay. And at 5:00, it is at any one of the participating businesses?
No, at 5:00, it's going to be at La Palmas.
Okay.
I'm sorry, at Bon Me.
At Bon Me?
Yes. From 5:00 to 9:00. It's going to be a Vietnamese solos.
Oh, okay. And I'm not sure if it's what our policy is, but Mr. Jones, do we list the Fourth Friday events on our calendar or is it?
It's absolutely going to be listed on our calendar and on our social media. We'll be publicizing it all.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Jones. Mr. Turner, I do think you're doing an excellent job and I hope much success for these events because they are a lot of fun.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Vice President Sanders, are there any announcements?
Yes, Madam President. The first announcement is Saturday, April 11th, at the Norristown Public Library from 1:00 to 3:00. They will be hosting an open house, which would involve door prizes, refreshments, live music and much more. That time is from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. On the same day, which is Saturday, there is a parade for the Little League opening day where they would have team announcements and a march on the field. And that time is from 8:30 to 12:00. Last, the last announcement that I have is April 19th. It's the 5K Run Walk for the Sexual Assault Awareness Month and that will be held at the Norristown Farm Park and that time is at 9:00. Does anyone else have any announcements? That concludes the announcements then.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sanders.
You're welcome.
Madam Secretary, any public comment?
No, there's not.
Any communications?
No, there's not.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a council member to consider a motion to appoint a member to the Police Pension Board and the Fire Pension Board, specifically to approve appointing Sonia Sanders as a member of the Police Pension Board and the Fire Pension Board. This is a real call, thank you. Madam Secretary, real call vote, please.
William Caldwell?
Aye.
Gary Simpson?
Aye.
Marlon Milner? Olivia Brady?
Aye.
Sonia Sanders?
Aye.
Linda Christian?
Aye. Thank you. Under administration, I'd like to request a motion to table Item A, Removal of Domestic Partner Health Benefit.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that 6:00 to 1:00, the item has been tabled.
5:00 to 1:00.
Who's missing?
Derek.
Oh, that's right, thank you. Mr. Jones, would you like to lead us in this discussion for Item B related to ordinance 0908?
Madam President?
Yes.
Before Mr. Jones starts, and I have discussed this with our solicitor, although it doesn't present a conflict of interest for me, I've made it my practice that whenever I'm engaged in an activity that brings a proposal to council, that I don't participate in the discussion as a council member and consequently don't vote on that. So in, just to be very transparent, I am part of the folks that are trying to bring the Food Truck Fridays to, you know, to the downtown. So I will not participate in the discussion, like I said, as a, as a council member or participate in the vote. So I just wanted to make sure, and I'm, Mr. Solicitor, I will get you that in writing, but I wanted to be upfront with that.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Caldwell. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. This, this item really was based on a request that came from the Treasurer's Office related to the allowance of food trucks along Sweet Street, specifically at the block from the edge of the One Montgomery down to Main Street. For Food Day Fridays, that would be in conjunction with the, most of them will be with Payday Fridays for the county. The goal that the county has in doing this was to encourage employees to get out of the building, not only county employees, but there was going to be an outreach to the state as well and the courthouse and as well, really to get folks out, including county operations and satellite operations away from, away from downtown. And so Treasurer's Office is represented to come and talk about this. And the reason we have it as listed because we had a similar request from the Arts Hill Group regarding Harding Boulevard as it abuts the Elmwood Park, particularly in the area around, in and around the Band Shell. Both of these activities, the, the second for Arts Hill was really a request to relocate the annual Arts Hill Festival to Elmwood Park and make it more of a music festival so that music, not only music vendors but food vendors could be located on, on the street, on Harding Boulevard as it abuts the park from the, for the hours of the event. For both events to take place, the easiest route to go, rather than looking at a change in existing ordinance, was to request a waiver of the ordinance for, for these two events. And in the case of the Food Day Friday events, for these several events to occur as a waiver of the ordinance granted by, by the council so that food trucks could be both on Sweet Street and, and on, along Harding. And for those events, I don't know if anybody from, from Arts Hill is here, but we do have representative from the Treasurer's Office who, who's here to speak on that, on behalf of the event.
Okay, and the representative speaking is who, Mr. Jones? Today?
I thought it was going to be Mr. Salas.
Not this evening, actually. Thank you very much, council members. My name is Josh Stein and I'm the First Assistant Solicitor for Montgomery County, from the Commissioner's Office. First, I'd like to thank you very much to staff and elected officials of Norristown for being such excellent municipal partners. In return, the county would like to see nothing more than Norristown continue its growth and be able to encourage the growing food scene in the municipality. Recently, in the past few years, the county has encouraged our employees to get outside during the warm weather months to, as we have many employees who drive in to the building, will work there all day and then drive home without ever going outside or briefly only passing between buildings. We have about 1,400 employees and hundreds more visitors that come through our buildings on Sweet Street every day. And we think that there's a wonderful opportunity to have people come outside and explore what Norristown has to offer. We began a program of having food vendors come to the county seat to be able to offer their wares. However, due to the ordinance that's currently in place, we were restricted in where we could place them. We would have to put them around the corner on Main Street, set back next to the garage entrance underneath the courthouse. I personally spoke with a number of the vendors there, perhaps while sampling their wares, but talked to them about their success there. And while all of them were certainly appreciative of the opportunity, a number of them expressed some disappointment in the fact that there was very little foot traffic coming that way. Despite the large number of people that work in our buildings, just given the topography and a number of other factors, they weren't being enticed to take the walk around the corner. Whereas on the few times when we've already received exemptions to have food trucks directly in front of the building, we've seen large numbers of people get outside. And we think that there's an excellent opportunity to continue that this year. And that's why we're here to request an exemption for twice a month on the Fridays to coincide with our paydays to allow a number, you know, however many vendors would be reasonable to be able to sell food there to anyone who's in the area, as again, particularly to our employees and visitors. Where we're talking about Sweet Street, particularly that one block area, although I believe the proposal may be to extend it between Marshall and Lafayette, which would certainly allow for a greater opportunity. We understand the importance of our local restaurateurs and allowing them to have an opportunity and we welcome them and all participants. We'd like to see as many local businesses have the opportunity to grow as possible. On a personal note, before coming to work in Norristown, I worked downtown Philadelphia for 10 years, directly across from Love Park, and watched as that went from an area that was to be avoided to a tourist and local destination, doing no small part to the explosion of food trucks, starting with one, eventually they went up to multiple ones every day in, rotating in shifts. In particular, I recall when Jose Garcis opened up his taco truck and there was an hour long wait for tacos. So I think that there's definitely a pent up demand for people to be able to get outside. So, I think that there's definitely pent-up demand for people to be able to get outside, enjoy what Norristown has to offer, and I hope you seriously consider this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you. What has the reaction to this idea from local businesses been?
I would probably defer to Mr. Turner to answer that question, but my understanding is that so long as we are talking about a proposal that would encourage local businesses to be involved, I believe it would be positive for all parties, but I don't know if Mr. Turner would want to speak to that.
Local businesses, they actually welcome, or they are, I'm sorry, local businesses, they are planning to, you know, participate. Some of the businesses in that area, some of the restaurants in that area, they're in the process, I guess, of filling out a sidewalk, you know, permit where they can actually set up, you know, tables. Because what we're hoping that, you know, as the employees, the county employees actually come out of the building, that they will actually travel down, you know, Sweet Street and, you know, turn the corner. And some of the restaurants also going to have live music, doing that, doing, I guess, those hours. I know Jess Java is planning to have live music, and as far as some of the restaurants participating, or some of the restaurants that are actually going to be along Sweet Street, Diva's Kitchen, they are going to be there. And of course, you know, Jess Java is, you know, right there on, you know, Sweet Street. And I'm just waiting to hear back from some other restaurants, too.
Thank you.
Councilman Milner?
I have several questions. I've not read the ordinance carefully in its entirety beyond the suggested changes. One question I have is about regulation, and I'm directing this to Mr. Jones, although if Mr. Stein, if this is a county, an issue of county jurisdiction, you may answer as well. So, of course, as we know, in Philadelphia, food trucks are regulated by the City of Philadelphia, so, and I realize food truck here is a broader term, so, you know, if someone's going to have a table, they're not going to literally have a food truck, but there are food truck vendors. Can someone speak to the licensing and regulatory aspect here, if any?
We do, as a part of our ordinances, have what we call it a transient license fee for folks who want to do that business. I think it's $25 to be able to do it, and that's the regulation that we have in place.
Do they have to get a license from the county health department?
They do, indeed. They are regulated by the county health department.
Okay. And is that licensed from the county? It sounds like, Mr. Jones, our license is episodic, right? So, per event? Would that be the right understanding of it?
I did wish for the...
I haven't looked at it.
That's not per event, is it?
No, no. That actually, I think, grants them a number of opportunities to do it during the course of a year.
So, it's an annual, like a rental license? It's for the year?
I believe it is.
Well, I think it would be important to clarify this, because I sort of vaguely, I mean, I vaguely recall us basically taking actions that prohibit food trucks, period. So, but of course, we've had food vendors for, like, the, you know, Egyptian festival with, you know, people have obviously sold food outside, and so, I don't, I almost see those as apples and oranges, but I also recognize I don't know all the facts and issues here, and I may not be explaining things correctly. So, pardon?
I have a copy of the ordinance in front of me, related to transient sales, blah, 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 insurance, food vendors. Time of registration required by 23/3. Any transient merchants are from sale, otherwise, should be food to county. Yeah, it's an annual license, per the ordinance. And I believe you are correct. I know in the past, council had expressed some concern. I've been here for those debates about that, but I think there has been, you know, an effort from the county, and I want to speak for Mr. Jones, going back to Commissioner Richards, really pushing the food truck culture and seeing if it could be helpful for Norristown. And I think it's kind of gained a lot of support over the years, so I think that that debate was about six years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Before that?
Right, no, I'm not, so I'm not being, I'm certainly not being anti the idea here. I'm just trying to understand the legal moving parts with the changes.
Well, we have an ordinance in place that we obviously can regulate our own public rights away. They're putting in a request for a waiver of that, for this pilot program on Fridays, and see if it works out, and that's what the matters before you.
Okay. My, so I have two other, at least, so, and then with the county health department, that's an annual license or annual regulation in terms of someone?
Correct. They're regulated in the same way that any establishment that sells food trucks would be as well, and subject to inspections.
Okay. So, the other two questions I have is, one is, what consideration has the county given to the county plaza? So, for example, you mentioned Love Park, so while, of course, along many sidewalks in Center City Business District, there are food trucks, Love Park is a centralized destination in Center City. So, what about the concept of a centralized destination in the Norristown Central Business District, and not simply along the sidewalks?
If I understand you, you're referring to placing food vendors up on the plaza?
Correct.
We could actually...
Food vendors, period. I presume there won't just be, the idea here won't just be to have food vendors, but, I mean, Love Park has, you know, people selling clothes and fabric, I mean, it's all kinds of stuff going on there.
Yeah, if I could defer to Councilman Caldwell.
I knew I'd be up here, so that's why I recused. Yeah, the plan as it currently sits actually does some of that. The idea was to bring them up onto the sidewalk on Sweet Street, really between Penn Street and Main Street, which gives visibility down from our buildings, from the county buildings, so that people know it's there, and we can create some buzz. But we're also looking to pull the folks from the DEP Building, as well as the IU Building, which have some significant, you know, significant people. So, they're going to be coming up Main Street, and we thought that was kind of a central location for all of that. It also puts people, allows people to eat in the square. So, the trucks will physically be up on the sidewalk, if the plan works, physically be up on the sidewalk next to the square, and that'll allow foot traffic, as well as people to go back and eat on the square. And, you know, should we be able to get music or entertainment in, that all happens on the square piece of it. So, there's some green, there's, you know, the whole big plaza in the back. So, yeah, very similar idea to what you're thinking is where we were going.
The final question I have is, as it relates to these, we're considering a waiver, is that correct?
Yeah, waiver of your current ordinance, yeah.
As it relates to the waiver, would this apply to these restaurants being able to place seating in the sidewalk and umbrellas for tables? So that, again, even though we're using this phrase "food truck," what it could really mean is, in front of Ban Me Bar, they put four tables out with tent, and people could simply eat outside, you know, have an outside eating...
That's correct.
Okay.
Count...
Mr. Kilkenny, you look like you were...
No, no, I think he correctly answered the question, yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you. Mr. Caldwell just said something about the food trucks being parked on the sidewalk? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
Or in the street next to the sidewalk on Sweet Street? Because I'm concerned about damage to the sidewalk potentially, and also impedance to pedestrian traffic.
Again, those are plans. If you look at the sidewalk between Sweet and, or between Main and Anne on Sweet, for those of us who are of an age and remember when the, well, it's been a very long time since the trolley tracks came up there, but the sidewalk essentially is both the pedestrian piece, which is the standard, you know, normal piece of sidewalk, and then there's a whole, essentially, it's a double-wide sidewalk, because there used to be a trolley, the trolley tracks there. So, the idea was you could put them up, and you, my guess is, those, that size truck, you're not going to damage, really damage the sidewalks, they're all fairly new, but you could put the trucks up and kind of out of the street, giving it a little bit more visibility from the street, was the idea behind that, so that it would be, again, the idea was to have some visibility. But if that's an issue, that can be changed, they can be on the trucks facing, I mean, that all kind of stuff can work itself out. That's not a huge issue.
And if I could just be allowed to elaborate on that slightly, again, the county's method of attempting to go through with its program previously had been to place the food vendors, including some trucks, on the sidewalk on Main Street, far back from the actual right-of-way for pedestrian walking. Along Erie Street there, I'm sorry, along Sweet Street, it poses more of an issue, only because it's not as wide. We had initially looked at that possibility, but realized that both for pedestrian walkway and for emergency access and security, it posed some issues. So, our request for that area right in between the two county buildings would be to allow them to park on the sidewalk.
Councilman Simpson had his hand up first.
Sure. So, Mr. Stein, thank you. First, secondly, so the sidewalk piece, because you have a couple recessed sections of sidewalk below the square, which is all county property, because that's essentially what you're looking at, is utilizing the county sections or yours, county property, per se, where you're going to put the vendors, as well as the vending vehicles, correct?
That's where we have been placing them.
Right.
They're all on Main, but again, directly in front of, in between the two buildings, there we would require sidewalk access.
Right.
And that's where the majority of the people coming in between the two buildings would be, it would be most visible for them.
Right. So, essentially, if those sidewalks are damaged, you're going to be responsible for those, right?
No comment.
There you go. So, that's the point that I was really trying to make, so I don't think we should really...
Yes, they will, sir.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want, I don't want folk to be necessarily, you know, outraged, but then also understand that, you know, most of this is happening on the county property, or county properties.
Isn't that our property? I thought...
Negative. Shh, negative, that's their stuff.
No, it's, no, it's...
The Sweet, the Sweet piece is ours.
Right.
Yes, absolutely ours. The sidewalk along Sweet Street, that's ours.
But they'll be responsible for repairing anything that they damaged.
Oh, no, yeah, responsibility, but it's not their property, so don't give our stuff away.
Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Councilman Milner?
I'm not done yet. I wasn't done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, thank you. So, the other question that I have is, or something that, just a comment more so, and I was speaking to Ms. Missonier about this. I know that you guys are in the very infancy stages of this, but, and they do it in most larger cities. I'm from Pittsburgh originally, and Mellon used to sponsor, like, a jazz series in their parks, in certain parks, as well as certain properties. So, kind of just like the courtyard that you have, or in Love Park down in Philadelphia, like a Thursday and a Friday, you might hear live jazz for the lunch hour, lunch two hours. So, say, let's say 12 to 2, you would hear maybe bands play. So, and then most times, like I said, Mellon Bank used to be the ones, were the big sponsors behind that. Again, same thing, utilize banks to necessarily get behind this here project, because I think that would be great. You continue to push for what Norristown is doing, and you continue to partner with what Norristown is doing. That's just a little nugget thrown out there. That would be a great addition.
And I agree, and I believe that particularly the Treasurer's Office, but along with the Commissioners, have been working to try and make something like that happen.
That'd be great, thank you.
Councilman Milner?
Let me echo what Councilman Simpson said, but also say that, you know, public dollars can be spent in the City of Philadelphia, in the plaza of City Hall. The Deputy Mayor's Office for Arts and Culture does music on that property, and I'm sure they may have some corporate sponsors, but that's a municipal investment as well. So, as county seat, if you're going to do music on the plaza, then that's a very worthy investment of county dollars. There's also, as I'm sure you know, Creative Monco, which is funded by the William Penn Foundation. I'm sure the Commissioner Chairman has a very good relationship with the William Penn Foundation, and could go to them and approach them about doing something specifically in the county seat. I don't think I have any other questions at this time. I just wanted, if it comes back to me, I'll ask. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? For the, I'm trying to understand the relationship of the Treasurer's Office in this request, because I do remember, and this is kind of two questions, because I do remember it had come up before, and it was being presented by Commissioner Richards, and so, I'm trying to figure out, is there a benefit to the Treasurer's Office being involved in this? How did that relationship come about?
Sure, I can answer that. It really came about, I mean, you know, I had been on the other side of the conversations of food trucks for a couple of years with, for last year, during my presidency with Commissioners also. And, you know, that, while that kind of conversation didn't result really in anything last year, this year, you know, the conversation came up on, you know, gee, is that something that could be started again? At about the same time that Ed Turner and the Norristown Business Association was looking to do Fourth Fridays, and when we looked at the, literally, we looked at the calendar and realized that four of the Fridays that were, that was being thought about for the food trucks corresponded to the Fourth Fridays, and the Treasurer really was kind enough to offer, you know, my services, to help coordinate, you know, everything from, you know, putting the people together to talk about, can we do it? What can we do? How can we get it done? You know, how can we get everybody in the same room and talk? So, really, it was, it was his generosity with my time that got him involved, to let me come up and say, hey, we would love to, you know, I mean, all of these kinds of things take some time to put together and some coordination, and that is, really, is the essence of my involvement, is to, you know, do some of that legwork that, take some of that burden off the Commissioners, take that burden off, in this case, municipal government, and do the legwork for it, and make sure that, you know, everything gets done, and that people, you know, people get press, the press gets out, all that kind of stuff. So, that's the only, it's my time is the only thing that we're really putting into it. But, I mean, the Treasurer's always, has always had a, you know, philosophy to try to work with, in any way he can, with the businesses, both in Norristown as well as throughout the county, so that's it.
Thanks. Now, this question is directly related, and kind of go to Mr. Jones, and by the way, I think this is an excellent idea, and I've been waiting for it to happen. What I'm trying to figure out is what was the change? I can't claim to understand the resistance to allowing the trucks and the vendors in that area before, so I'm trying to understand what was the resistance before, and how is it different now?
I wasn't here before, so I don't know what the resistance was.
Madam President, may I, may I comment on that? Oh, sorry, okay.
Well, yeah, we better let the... And then you comment, Councilman Simpson.
Sure, Sean.
Sure, having been here for several debates, my estimation, you know, being here 11 years, in the past, it had been, they were afraid that local businesses would be hurt, but I think there has been a philosophical change, and you heard from Mr. Turner, that local businesses now, in partnering with this, think it actually could be helpful, in drawing county employees to their local businesses, and this may be a tool to get them out of the, you know, One Montgomery Plaza and other places.
Okay, Mr. Simpson, you were going to say?
I'm going to go with exactly what I was going to say.
Say, okay. Wait a minute, Marlon, I still have a couple of other questions that answers that. Now, I'm wondering about the other part of this, though, the waiver for Harding Boulevard by Arts Hill, and the waiver, and the way that it's given is based on what? Because I'm wondering, how do you pick and choose who can use Harding Boulevard around by the park as a vending area?
Well, your ordinance, the same ordinance prohibits food trucks along Harding Boulevard as...
No, I know. But I'm saying, in this, we're waiving it for Art Hill.
For that festival, for that name.
Or are we waiving it for any other entity that might want to have vendors along Harding Boulevard at Elmwood Park? Because during the summer, there are multiple events down there. So does this open it up for those individuals to have those things?
Well, what we're here requesting, or what they're requesting, and what we're responding to is for those specific days. Our Art Hill in this instance is a, is a May 2 event.
So this would only...
For May 2, for that event.
Okay. So it would only relate to May 2 for Art Hill?
Right.
And then the Fourth Fridays?
Would be April 24th, May 22nd, June 19th, July 17th, August 28th, and September 25th.
Okay. Councilman Milner, you had a question?
Thank you. Actually, that makes me think of some other things, though. But, so first, given the philosophical shift, are there going to be any steps taken to give priority to Norristown-based restaurants and/or businesses vending with this waiver?
To the extent that, that the way our program has worked thus far is that the county selects, you know, one or two vendors for each event, we would certainly be in agreement that we would want to have, to make sure that local restaurants and vendors were included in each time we did it.
Second question was, I thought a part of this request, as it related to where, and again, I know when we use this phrase, food truck, it doesn't necessarily mean RV-like structure with the kitchen inside. However, I thought a part of this request I had read was in relationship to waiving parking fees at the, so that's...
They have thankfully pulled that request from the table, I believe. I will be very honest, Counsel. My response, my response to the parking issue when it came up in the discussion was the fact the Council has already reduced its parking rates by 20%, by, 25% by going from $2 an hour to 150 an hour. We've made, you've made the adjustment for credit cards, and you've made the adjustment for incremental parking so that you're not, no longer locked into $2, even if you're staying there for 15 minutes, you can actually now pay for 15 minutes. And so that was my response, but my, I did agree that I would make sure it was known that at the time of the discussions, that was the request, and that this was going to be my response, and then certainly whatever Counsel decided was fine with us.
So that was a whole lot there, but just to back up, so that was in the packet, right? I thought I read that.
It was.
Okay, so, okay, hold on, hold on. Wait a minute. So as it related to that, though, did that anticipate that some vendors might be of the size and type that they actually need to park on the street? Like the vendors you see around Temple University, Drexel, et cetera? I mean, was there an anticipation that there would be larger, quote, food trucks that would in fact need to park on the street?
Yes. From the county's perspective, we, we were hoping to be able to have those types of vendors included as well.
And in order to do so, you'd want to waive the fee that they would pay for parking in those spaces for that timeframe? Is that right?
That was, I mean, if Counsel would consider that, we would certainly appreciate it, but we're, we don't believe that it's a make or break issue.
Okay, okay. And then the final question to Mr. Jones, this is an observation, this is more toward Counsel President's comment, and sort of being more proactive. So yes, I know we have a request, a set of requests before us that we've combined, but one can imagine that, for example, perhaps we could enhance the summer concert series if vendors were allowed to be present along Harding Boulevard. That might bring more people out to that. So, I mean, that's run internally, that's run by the Recreation, you know, Parks and Recreation, the Recreation Committee. So there is no, quote, outside business or entity, though NBA could very well want to partner with the municipality in their concert series and have, you know, local businesses sell food and items. So I'm asking, in the midst of this discussion for these particular requests, is it possible for us to be proactive? You know, the baseball fields there, I mean, Harding Boulevard is a recreational corridor. Elmwood Park Zoo is always doing things that could easily spill out beyond the zoo. So any thoughts in that regard? Mr. Jones?
I'm preparing my speaker is done. It's trying to make it work. Certainly something that we can look at. It hasn't been anything that, that has been discussed, but it's certainly something we can look at.
Thank you. Let me just say in conclusion, Counsel President, I would support the waiving of the parking fees to allow the larger trucks, which, I mean, this is what they do, and to do it, they need a space on the street. So I'd certainly be supportive of it.
Well, I think that's per truck that you were talking, and originally it would have been waiving for all, all slots, right? But what you're saying is for the participants to waive the fee for the trucks that are participating in there, as opposed to the general public that parks down there.
Well, I wasn't clear on the complete, you know, how many spaces did they want waived? But, you know, certainly what would work is you wouldn't, you'd want to probably have those large-sized vehicles in all in one area. So if you thought that would require, I don't know, 10 spaces or what have you. But I didn't, I didn't read that finely, so if it was, talking about the entire CBD around the courthouse, then no, I wouldn't support that. But if they wanted to have a select area over, you know, so there's this overall terrain that we're approving, but if, say, along the courthouse plaza on Main Street, you wanted to put the large trucks and you thought you needed 12 spaces to do that, I'd certainly be willing to entertain that.
And the county's request is actually in line with what Councilman Milner is suggesting?
Okay. Counsel, any other questions, comments? Just for the record, I happen to agree, maybe not 12 spots, but if it's going to boost activity, you know. But what's on it is for...
Negative.
The dates mentioned by Crandall, the waivers for those specific times, for those specific entities. And our next steps that you wanted us to do, Mr. Jones, is what?
Make a motion.
Okay. Counsel, would a counsel person like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 09 of 2009? Really?
If we waived that or not, if we've been the waiver of that ordinance, has it written or has it written, per the base discussed by the... Yes.
Second. Does it require real call? All those in, we had a discussion. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Milner. Go ahead.
The amendment that the county be allowed to recruit trucks that may need to use parking spaces, and that we waive the fees initially as an interim for the first two dates, the 20, well, I thought the dates were here. The 20, what are they, in the packet?
Yes.
Okay.
The dates are April 24th...
April 24th and May 22nd. To A, determine, you know, the level of interest, and B, to C, based on the level of interest, how many actual spaces might need to be provided.
Madam President, may I suggest, Mr. Milner has offered a friendly amendment. Do the, do the people that made the motion and the second accept that amendment? That'd be the way to handle it. If not, then the amendment fails, and we go ahead and vote.
Right. The individual that made the motion was who?
Olivia Braden.
Okay. And the one who seconded it was who? Who?
Sonia, Ms. Sanders.
Are you guys comfortable with an amendment, or did you want it as, as it?
I'm fine with that.
You're fine?
So it's now the motion as amended per Mr. Milner's request, and now you're voting on that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Negative.
Ah, the motion carries. Thank you. It's Mr. Schein, correct?
Stein, actually.
Stein. Thank you very much, Mr. Stein. Thank you, Councilman Caldwell, and thank you, Mr. Jones. What, you have a question for them before they go?
Mr. Turner?
Ed?
Yes.
So I just offered this recommendation that the municipality consider allowing vendors more, you know, it's sort of taking a proactive approach. And I just mentioned the summer concert series, we've got Little League coming up at the ball fields, I believe Chestnut Hill College is still playing at the ball field. So given the proactive nature of what you've been doing with, with arts and entertainment and so forth, it'd be helpful if the business community sort of proactively looked at, what are the other things going on in Norristown where this type of waiver could be useful? And I personally think, we got, so there are all kinds of activities in Elmwood Park, but the concert series certainly comes to mind. The Recreation Committee runs a snack stand, but, you know, what if there were half a dozen, eight vendors selling souvenirs and food? Could that help even grow what the municipality's already invested in? So maybe if our approach is to have the business community bring us requests, you know, you could consider these and other activities that go on and proactively bring us more requests.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why are you guys, go ahead, Councilman Simpson.
So I just want to make a comment to this last vote that we just, that we just went through. There's two things. I think one of the things that is very important, this has nothing to do with you, Mr. Turner, and thank you very much for your hard work and efforts. I think people need to start understanding what it is that we're looking at. So I think everybody needs to read their information before we come to council meeting. I think you need to ask more questions with regards to, hold on, let me finish, please. You need to ask more questions with what is involved in this. The parking spaces had nothing to do with the trucks. The parking spaces were for people to come up to be able to utilize the use and access of the trucks. I'm not finished, and I want to finish speaking. I think we need to start getting ourselves to understand what it is that we're agreeing to before we start making motions, because we don't read everything, and then we sit on the floor and we ask 5 million questions and still don't ask the right questions. So now I'm done, and I don't agree with it.
Okay. Common, considered. As Counsel President, one of the things I will say, however, is the back-and-forth conversation, regardless of whether it seemed like it's tied in directly to what was written, I think is very, very helpful, it's beneficial, and so I understand it, I appreciate it. We'll stick to the agenda.
The back-and-forth conversation is not what I was referring to.
Okay, Councilman Simpson, please. I gave you your opportunity, I gave Counsel the opportunity to go off topic. Right now, we're going to, we're under finance, before I request a motion for this, Mr. Jones, would you speak to us a little bit about this particular resolution and how it relates to Pima and our finance director?
I'll, I'll speak very briefly and then let Ms. Burkett actually bring the crux of the matter to Counsel. Basically, the situation is that municipality had applied for federal disaster relief for damages caused by Hurricane Sandy in 2012, and through the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. We received those funds that we applied for approximately $50,000. And there is a reporting requirement that we have as it relates to those for, those funds, and in order to access the information and the system that we need to do to make a report on those funds, requires that a designee of the municipality, a specific designee of the municipality, access that system. At this point, we do not have a current employee who is that specific access, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Burkett to finish.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. The request is in response to Counsel considering updating the authorized, updating the designee agent as the current finance director currently on file with Pima is the former finance director. So the final reconciliation reports cannot be filed until this change is made from naming the current finance director to that position if they so consider.
Thank you, Ms. Burkett. Counsel, any questions? Councilman Milner?
Thank you.
Are we able to name an alternate? I mean, I would presume a state agency recognizes that anything could be named, could happen to the designated person, and they could still, you know, be employed with the municipality, they could be out on sick leave, et cetera. So what is the provision in that case?
When I made an inquiry as to whether or not I would be able to act in my current position on behalf of the former finance director, I was told no. What they require is that the form be updated with someone who would be designated in that position currently to be able to file those forms. They did not give an option for an alternate.
So there's no provision? So if you were out sick, we would go through this process again and say, designate Rochelle?
No, no.
The practice would be, if I were incapacitated to the point where I couldn't respond to the filing and signing, we would have to submit a new form to be able to respond to the final reconciliation, as I was advised.
But that is, that is not, oh, it happened today and it must be done tomorrow, correct? A signing or a representation of something?
No, I believe that an extension of time under a circumstance similar to me being, someone like me being out sick. It would only be the case if it was permanent incapacitation or I was no longer with the municipality.
Right. In other words, if she was sick to this week and something came up, it would not prevent, right?
In this, in this instance, what came up is, came up months after we, we received the funds. And it was, it was something that had not been brought to the finance director's attention until we got notice that the change needed to be made. And it was months later, and they actually, I think, gave us initially an April 15 deadline, or some close deadline, to do the funds and to do the transfer of names. And once we let them know, they extended that so that we could have this meeting to have that done. But typically, this is, again, a report that should have been filed long before Ms. Burkett came on board, and, and if that was a problem, we'd get an extension to take care of it.
If I could, just one other comment. I believe that in this particular case, it's related to a specific circumstance as well. So if we had another occurrence where we had an emergency relief request, this is a process that would have to be done for each instance. It doesn't apply globally to every instance.
Right.
Right. Okay, no, that's helpful. That was the other thing I wanted to clarify. Yeah, so there's no, I don't have any confusion that the person is no longer employed.
Right.
It was about the episodic nature of not being available. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? I'd like to request Counsel make a motion to approve the adoption of ordinance, resolution. It is resolution, I'm sorry. My papers say ordinance. Adoption.
Time, ma'am.
Oh, I'm, I'm down the line. I stand corrected. The resolution 15-117, I heard a motion. Is there a second?
Aye.
All those, roll call? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary, please.
William Caldwell?
Aye.
Gary Simpson?
Aye.
Aye.
Marlon Milner?
Aye.
Olivia Brady?
Aye.
Sonia Sanders?
Aye.
Linda Christian?
Aye. Next item is under planning. No, not this time.
I think this is important related to the matter we just voted on.
What is it, Councilman Milner?
So given the episodic nature of these emergency declarations, and given that the one we're updating is from 2013 related to the Hurricane Sandy disaster, is administration aware if there are any other outstanding declarations which would have to be so updated? I mean, from snow and any other incidents?
But they would let us know, Councilman Milner.
We have not received any funding, and this is based as a result of a reporting because we receive funding. For many incidents, snow emergencies that we've had, as you know, we've declared snow emergencies, we've prepared the paperwork, we submitted necessary paperwork when we had to, to the county and state, and to date, no reimbursement or action was taken on any of those. So we don't, we don't have any, I know in my tenure here that are outstanding.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I believe, will it be you, Ms. Smithsonian, who speaks to us about the CDBG Consolidated Action Plan?
Yes. Would you like me to give it?
Yes, please.
Madam President, thank you. It's that time of the year, I know we've gone back and forth with regard to getting our application for the 2015 Action Plan CDBG funding. We were informed by HUD that we have $812,640,000 to go towards the 2015 year. The planning department has completed all the requirements in terms of the steps that need to be taken in order to submit the application for 2015, and one of those steps, of course, included updating the consolidated plan that council has been apprised of, and council approved it in the last meeting that we had, the workshop, and now the ordinance is for the 2015-year action plan, whatever items that have been included, so that we can submit the application to HUD for approval. We have to get this application in to HUD by Monday, April 13, that's why we're asking council to approve this ordinance, so that we can submit the application.
Thank you, Ms. Smithsonian. Council, any questions? I'd like to request a motion to approve ordinance 15-04.
So moved.
Does this require roll call? Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
William Caldwell?
Aye.
Gary Simpson?
Aye.
Marlon Milner?
Aye.
Olivia Brady?
Aye.
Sonia Sanders?
Aye.
Linda Christian?
Aye. The motion carries. Moving on to public works, Mr. Glisson, can you give us a little more information about the agreement between municipality of Norristown and Plymouth Township regarding the operation and maintenance of the Ross Street Bridge?
Yes, I can. This was a construct that arose because of the construction of the new Ross Street Bridge on the portion of the Lafayette Street extension, the first phase of that, which went from Ford Street down to just into Plymouth, a little, a little bit ways into Plymouth Township. And as part of this, the bridge had to be constructed, there is a portion of it that's in the, in Norristown, majority of it is in Plymouth Township. As such, the bridge will become our joint responsibility, and there's a division of the bridge in a 65% for Plymouth Township, 35% for Norristown, and that was based on analysis and a fair sharing of it. Plymouth will also be the lead municipality because it is, has a majority interest in the maintenance of the bridge. And just to give you a quick example, why we did it this way is if you, say, had a fuel truck coming down, and for whatever reason, there was an accident, and it started on, in Norristown's portion of it, the truck flips, you know, worst case, skids into, you know, Plymouth Township, and it's tearing up the, perhaps an embutment, parapets, et cetera, on the bridge, you know, it's on fire and everything, okay, we don't have to do, get together and huddle over what percentage for the repairs, et cetera, would be done, you know, that, it's already clearly stated here, Plymouth would take the lead on that, and, you know, Norristown would be a participant in this, because the bridge is ours forever, jointly.
Thank you, Mr. Glisson. Council, any questions? He must be getting tired.
Madam Chair, just for the record, I will add that council actually agreed to take co-ownership of the bridge per ordinance 1305 of 2013, but it's really been a hammering out of the agreement now to, to actually put teeth and words to your ordinance that in which you agreed to co-own the bridge and co-maintain it.
Okay, council, no questions. Now, Mr. Jones, relative to that, since we're doing this at our council meeting, will the same thing be taking place on the Plymouth side, and do we know if they've already approved it, or is it coming up?
I know it's, I know it's coming up, we met, I met with the manager of Plymouth, we met, I think our last meeting was a couple of weeks ago, both of us are trying to get this done now, as the county, the deadline for making sure we get it in time for, to the county is rapidly approaching at the end of this month, so they will be approving it.
Council, I'd like to request a motion to enter into an intermunicipal cooperation agreement between the municipality of Norristown and Plymouth Township regarding the Ross Street Bridge.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You have the approval. Under public safety, although it's self-explanatory, Chief Talbert, could you tell us a little bit about the request?
We're requesting you approve this resolution erecting a handicap space in front of 316 East Moore, we've checked and there's a need for it, and for the removal of two handicap spaces that are no longer needed, one's at 108 Hamilton Street, and the other is at 919 West Erie Street.
Thank you, Chief Talbert. Council, any questions? I'd like to request a motion to approve resolution 15-116, providing a handicap parking space in front of 316 East Moore Street, and to approve the proper removal of two handicap spaces at 108 Hamilton Street and 919 West Erie Street.
Second.
Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
William Caldwell?
Aye.
Gary Simpson?
Aye.
Marlon Milner?
Aye.
Olivia Brady?
Aye.
Sonia Sanders?
Aye.
Linda Christian?
Aye. Last item on our agenda is a request for us to approve a HARP certificate of appropriateness for 1046 Green Street. Are there any questions? I'd like to make a motion that we approve the HARP certificate of appropriateness for...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council, would you make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes, sir.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.